Right now, oh, I'm sorry, the meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WCTV. And we're going to go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance with Mike Flaherty. He's out there by its flag. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have, right now, we have three school committee members, myself, Mike, and Mary. Kevin is not able to join us this evening. But April, I believe, will join us, so we'll watch out for her. And Bob, if you could just keep an eye on the, on the attendees. Unless she joins us. Emily Roburge is here with us, our student rep. Dr. Shavelhood is also not able to join us this evening, but we have Dr. Schwab. I'd like to start off tonight with a moment of silence. Earlier this month, Mary Jane Burke passed away. She was someone who was in the high school when I was in the high school. She started there in 1959 and retired as the principal in 1993. She served as a social studies teacher, a social studies department chair, a guidance counselor, an assistant principal, and then principal. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mary Jane Burke. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the first item on our agenda, which is public participation. Bob, if you could let in Ann Pearl and Lisa Wright. Anne, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Hi, I'm Ann Pearl. I am a parent of a senior at Wareham High School. And I'm actually here and concerned about the senior prom that they have put out for these kids. It is our understanding that we've gotten some notification that the prom is going to be held at the Plymouth Plantation. And as of just yesterday, the Plymouth, the town of Plymouth just changed their numbers and they actually went to 100 people inside and 100 people, 150 outside. Okay, I don't, Joseph, sorry. Video. Okay, here it is, sorry. So we are requesting, I have my son who is the senior. We're actually requesting the school committee to consider because we've been told that the kids have to sit two to a table at the prom. When all of the regulations in the state right now are six to a table. When dining, when at a venue, they're allowing dance floors. And these have been in effect since March 22nd. So we're requesting that the school committee help us out here and try to get this changed so that the kids can actually enjoy the prom and not just, they're not being allowed to bring guests. They're not allowed to bring any outside guests. We would like to be able to see them bring some inside guests, kids that are already in the school with them, where the numbers have now gone up to 150. I understood before when it was 100 and they couldn't do that. But now with the being 150 outdoors and the venue that they're having it at is fully outdoors. And I know for a fact that Plymouth Plantation is inhering to all of those regulations. Purely because I have a wedding I'm going to next week, and they said that all sides have to be up. They will be outside the whole time. So we're just kind of trying to get this so that the kids can actually enjoy it. They've had such a terrible year and we would like to actually see them have a good time at their prom.
Okay, so as you know, this is on our agenda for tonight, so we will be hearing from the principal in just a little while. But thank you for coming and sharing. And I know that Lisa Wright is here also to speak. Lisa, do you want to speak now? Lisa, I think you're on mute. While she's doing that, I would just, just note that April has joined us. Hi, April.
Hi, hopefully everyone will be able to hear me tonight.
So far, so good. Joyce, are you correct that Dr. Shavelhood is not going to join us tonight?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
So I echo what you said. It seems that regulations that the state has rolled out should be adhered to, that the two per table is, I think it gets ridiculous, they're not going to be able to enjoy themselves. They're in, like, they're working. I don't understand the and very sad that not students on this call, that they have thrown up their hands and feel that they can't do anything to make a difference and change things.
Well, like I said to Anne, it is on our agenda for tonight. We will be hearing from the principal and from others, so we look forward to that. We, as a school committee, in the past, the only discussion that we've had about the prom is the date and the venue, which is what we would normally discuss. So we are not involved in any of, you know, this planning, so you know, certain, certainly we're happy that you're here and expressing your concerns. And when that comes up on the agenda, we'll be able to hear, you know, how they got to what they've planned. We, as a school committee, have not been able to hear that yet. But again, we appreciate that you're here, sharing your thoughts.
Thank you. Can you clarify, was the venue change so that there was more people or that they could have a date? Because that was my understanding.
Again, that's a question that we, as a school committee, we can't answer. I don't know the answer to that. You'll get all those answers very shortly.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you both for being here. I'm just going to check. I know that there are some kids in the attendees. Is there Abby and Allison? If either of you would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll bring you in for public participation. Bob, could you let Abby write in?
I believe Allison is a teacher, but I could be wrong.
Okay. Abby, do you want to go ahead and turn your camera and your mic on? There you go.
Also here, like with the issue of the prom and just trying to maybe figure something out. Like, I know it's short timing, but like, it's our senior year, like, we're not going to get another one, so just want to make the best of it.
Abby, have you been, have you been involved in any conversations at the high school about the planning of the prom?
A little bit, but I don't really feel like any of the students were really being included in any of the conversations. We were kind of just being told what's going to happen.
Okay, so thank you, Abby, for being here. We're going to go ahead and the prom is on the agenda very early in the meeting, so we'll, we'll get to it very shortly, okay? And again, thank you all for, for coming tonight to share, to share with us. So just check one more time in participants to see if there's anyone who would like to address the committee. If there's anyone there in attendees who would like to address at this time, just go ahead and raise your hand so I can, I can tell. Nope, I don't see anyone. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is good news. Does anyone have any good news they would like to share? Dr. Schwab?
Yeah, so it's very exciting. All of our kids are back, or the ones that have chosen to come back are all back. And so far, it's been, you know, busy, of course, moving about and arranging and getting schedules squared away and all of that. But it's really a great thing to have kids back. And I know that the elementary schools have been back a little bit longer. So I was given pictures from Deacon's yesterday of all the kids participating in their literacy groups, doing boost and doing education and movement. And everyone is just so excited about having their students with them. And they're working really hard to just get them on board and on track. And then our summer programming is also quite lively. We have a lot going on. We've, you know, brought boost up from K1, 2, and 3. We have some fabulous teachers who are volunteering. We had another four kindergarten teachers propose a boost for age four-year-olds to five, helping them transition from preschool to kindergarten. So there'll be a two-morning-a-week boost introduction over the summer for them. The teachers just took it upon themselves to create this proposal and it was accepted by Jane through her program. So we've all been working hard and we're, we're just very excited to be back to somewhat as normal as we can be at the moment.
That's great to hear. April?
Hi, so I just wanted to kind of pay back on Andrea's statement of how great it's been. I know with my son having gone back to school this week, full-time at the high school, and just to focus on all of the kids that have started getting their licenses, going through the driver's ed course. So it's nice to see that not only have they gotten to go back full-time, but they're starting to drive themselves, which I think is really exciting and kind of helps them move forward and feel like they have a bit more control over, over their, their life. So it's really exciting to see so many kids kind of moving on in the high school and kind of getting there on their own now that school's back in session.
Great. I wanted to share that too. I know that our high school is, is back this week and not every high school is. I just wanted to make that clear. You know, I'm really, we're really fortunate that, that we were able to make that happen, that you were all able to make that happen. You know, that, that's not the case in every town. Certainly in surrounding towns, maybe it is. But, but we're still really fortunate and thankful that we were able to, to do that for our students. Mike, sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
That's okay. So it's been a little while since we met, but Ms. Becky Aki, you and I toured the Deacon's School. And that, that was, that's, that's always a good, a good thing. I always liked going there. It was unfortunate, it was later in the day and, you know, there were no students there. But it was good to see the teachers and the rooms and, but, I mean, right away, when, when you walked in, you could just smell how clean it was. You know, the custodians were doing a great job. Everybody, I'm sure, is doing a great job. You know, they have a soft spot for that school. That's where my son went, you know, so, and I miss it.
I know what I said to Mrs. Chandler that day was, you would never know that a half an hour before we were there, it was full of kids. You know, it was clean, it was, yeah. And the setups that the teachers have, you know, they all have their own way of, of doing it. And it's really, I'm just so glad that we got to get in and see that because, yeah, it's amazing what they're doing. So that leads me into next week being Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, I just want to say that, of course, that will be celebrated, but we appreciate the teachers every day, every week, all year long, especially this year. You know, for everything, our district is full of such wonderful, wonderful teachers. And we're certainly thankful all the time for everything that they, that they do for our students. Okay, does anyone else have any other good news to share? We will move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is the update from our student rep, Emily Roburge.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So I wanted to start off with, Student Council is actually hosting a trivia night, which started about 30 minutes. So via Zoom, and this is open to all students and staff. Bruce up the Thursday night and show up any random knowledge that they have. So that's super cool. Something also super exciting that I can't wait to go to is called She's Dead, and it's written and directed by two of our very own high school seniors. It is described as a dark new murder mystery comedy. So this production, it's taking place on May 8th at 6:30. So it has an opportunity to tune in by livestream as well as an in-person entry, and that's by donation. And the location is to be determined, whether it's at the football field or the softball field. We do want to keep it outside and keep everyone safe, but I'm sure that's going to be really great. Also, speaking to the fact that the high school has resumed our fall in-person days for anyone wanting to go, it's starting to feel almost normal. Like, things are obviously different, but lunches were a little less quiet. It's the face-to-face, like, instruction seems to be more interactive. It is an adjustment, getting used to these, like, longer back-to-back classes, and so we haven't done this since last March. But with due time, being in the classroom, it's, it's going to feel normal again. And heading towards the end of the year's, like, various activities, it's great timing to have students back together again. And I really can't wait to see where it takes us as we get closer to our, our last months of the year. Like, I think, for example, I take AP art and it's combined with a couple of kids from, I think, year two art class. And being able to see, like, other students work up close is, like, really exciting. Because before, we were, like, all on the computer and, like, some of us were drawing at home, some were in person. But there's people, like, there's painting and there's drawing. It's, it's great. And we all talk to one another. I mean, some classes are quieter, but I see that as time goes on, we're going to go back to, you know, our normal conversation. So speaking of the end of the year as well, on Monday, I believe, everyone is encouraged to wear our college gear. This, we can show off our collars, decisions, and it's also an opportunity for upperclassmen to kind of show their dream schools. So that's an exciting thing to do for Monday. But yeah, there's, I feel like a lot of good news going on as we get back to normalcy, so thank you.
Thank you, Emily. It's great to hear about that and it's great to see you smiling and so happy about being back in school. All right, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of our last meeting on April 8th. Does anyone have any questions or changes they'd like made to the minutes? Mike?
There was just one typo I found. So under the section for updates from the superintendent. And it's, it's kind of a common typo, I'm sure, in the central office or in that, in the district. It said, Mr. Flaherty responded that, well, this is a, "Updates from the Superintendent, 1, 2, 3rd paragraph down." "Mr. Flaherty responded that it is great to add new positions and asked if there are any concerns with finals cost for the new building prior to hiring new staff." So it's final costs.
Okay, I'm sure Jamie would be happy to make that change for you.
Other than that.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to approve then?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, rule of thumb vote, Mike?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
I'm pretty sure I wasn't there, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Myself, yes. So 301.
Is Kevin not here this evening?
Kevin is not here tonight, no.
Okay, I missed that part, but I was in waiting, so thank you.
Oh, sorry. I saw you missed the meeting.
That's okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is the senior class prom. So Scott, if you'd let them know who you'd like let into the meeting?
Yes, if Allison Benassi, I know you said is there, Grace Bajali, and if Adriana Dillon is there, I'm not sure if she was able to make it. They should be there representing. I'm hoping after I open things up, Ms. Benassi can talk about how inclusive this process has been and how involved all the students have been in researching locations and trying to figure out how we can safely have a senior prom. There have been a ton of Google Docs going out, a ton of communication that's gone out. And unfortunately, as usual, it's, it's a very small group of students that are actively involved. But we have two students that are very involved in the process. And at the end, Adriana was actually a student that visited our final two sites. So I just want to give you a little information, kind of how we got to this point and kind of what precautions we have in place. So I don't know if you remember back to February 27th, 2020, but that's when these folks came before you to ask for approval to have their senior prom, while they were still juniors, at the Cape Cod Club. And it was voted, approved 5-0. Boy, things have really changed since then. But the, the senior prom for the class of 2021, I want to just talk to you about how we got there. I want to thank the two students that are here. I want to thank, and I don't know if Steve Rumbold's there, we should let him in as well. He's the co-advisor. I want to thank Allison Benassi and Steve Rumbold and all the members of the senior class that were involved and got us to this point. The offices, the prom committee members. We, it's been quite a, quite a process. I know I was joking to you at the last school committee meeting that if you wanted to know anything about any venue south of Boston, that I felt I could, and I know Allison, Steve, Grace, and Adriana could definitely tell you about that. But we actually started with 50 venues. And here's what we were looking at. We wanted to sell, to follow the same procedure that we follow in school when eating lunch. And I want to just have you go back to hopefully your senior prom and remember how much time you actually spend at the table. And in Wareham, I can tell you, there's probably about 45 minutes of the prom that you actually spend seated at the table. So we really wanted to find a venue that we could safely have this senior prom. We didn't want this senior prom to be a super-spreader and ruin the seniors' last few weeks, senior week, and potentially ruin graduation. So we really felt like we had to do a great job and making sure we had an appropriate venue that would be safe for our students, that the superintendent would feel safe with the venue, and, and that's why we're here today. So we're here today asking for approval to change the venue. I just want to give you a little history of the 50 locations that we started off with. And, and I just want to thank again all the students and advisors that were involved. We got to 50 that we thought were, from a logistical standpoint, close enough to have the prom and could possibly safely have our prom. We then, and this was all south of Boston, obviously. We then narrowed down the list to 25 locations and then brought it down to 15. And eventually we got to five locations that we felt could satisfy our needs. Once we got it to five, we continued to do research and we were able to actually narrow it down to two. And that's when Adriana, Steve, Allison, and myself had a chance to visit the two, and it was quite clear to everyone that really there was only one viable option. And that is the Plymouth Plantation, which is now called the Plymouth Patuxent Museum. Basically, I was a pain in the neck in this process because I was not going to settle for us having students in close proximity. And I wanted to handle it, I wanted them to handle it the same way that we handle school lunch. And if you remember, the protocol for school lunch is six feet apart once the masks come off. So there's not a lot of venues that could satisfy that need. I also really was hoping we could find something that was outside or had a tent because I felt like the natural air would minimize any concerns and keep our students safe. Again, so we don't have a super-spreader event. So the six feet was really the toughest part that brought us very quickly down to about five venues. A lot of tables aren't six feet, as you know, at weddings and, and events, and, and that was important. We also obviously have some size requirements. We wanted to make sure that all of our students could attend if they wanted to attend. I've never been to a senior prom, and this will be my 27th senior prom. I've never been to a senior prom that had every senior student there. We did, for safety reasons, require that, you know, only seniors would attend, just because we want to maintain that safe environment. And I know that's not exciting, but it's about the seniors and it's about keeping them safe, so that's why we're here today. So I believe I'm going to turn it over to Grace Bajali, who is going to be attending Fairfield University in the fall. And she's one of our top students and senior class president, so I'm going to turn it over to her just to give you some information on the prom, the dates and all that fun stuff. So Grace, you're on, just turn your mic on.
Hi, so for prom information, so we're requesting a change in venue from the Cape Club that was canceled on us due to COVID restrictions. And our new prom venue would be at the Plymouth Patuxent Museum in Plymouth, Massachusetts. So the date would remain the same on May 22nd, 2021. And the time would be from 5:30 to 10:30, and we'll start 30 minutes earlier and end 30 minutes, 30 minutes earlier because of a 10:30 PM curfew at the Plymouth Patuxent Museum. All participant, all participants must be in the prom no later than 6:00 PM, and the tickets will be $75 each. And no guests will be allowed. A breathalyzer form and COVID permissions forms must be filled out before we can buy tickets. And these have been out in advisory and they're also in our classes' Google Classroom. The seating will be two per table, six feet apart per person. All tables will be six feet apart as well. And the majority of the seats will be under the large tent with all sides open. A few could be in the pavilion, depending on how many tickets are sold. The pavilion has sliding doors that will be kept open throughout three sides. Masks must be worn at all times except when we're eating. And we will have one chaperone for every 10 tickets sold from, and our school resource officer will be there as well. Thank you.
Grace, great job. And I hope and I can call up Adriana because Adriana had a chance to tour the facility. All of our students, as you know, are very involved in co-curricular activities. And Adriana just happened to be able to sneak it in before practice. So Adriana, I'm hoping that you can kind of talk about the facility a little bit, if I can put you on the spot.
Yeah, sure. So basically, there's like a large outdoor area that, there's like glass sliding doors and you can go outside, and there's plenty of room out there. We can even fit tables if we want to. One of the parts that I really liked about it was a stone fireplace, and the lady who gave us the tour, she said that we could actually turn it on during the prom. So if it's cold, we can stand by the fire, so I thought that was pretty cool. And on the inside, something that I really liked was that there were already, like, lights strung up, so we wouldn't have to decorate too much. And yeah, the inside was really pretty. The venue overall was really nice. And yeah, if anyone has any questions about it, I can answer because I went, so thank you.
Hopefully they have a lot of questions at the end for us, because I know you're ready for them. Allison has done a tremendous job, like I said, of, of including all of our students in this process and really being the head of all research. Allison is the co-advisor for the senior class with, with Steve Rumbold. Allison, if you can just kind of talk about the process and, and anything that I might have missed, but also how you've been, you know, including all the students in, in this process and making sure they get all the information.
Okay, so we've been sending out Google Forms to ask students different questions regarding the prom, their preferences and so forth. We basically, as Mr. Pelley, you know, said, went through like 50 different venues. We looked at, we considered table sizes. We were measuring table diameters. We were making floor charts. We were keeping cost because many of the venues were very expensive, so we needed to have a budget. We couldn't have a prom that was too expensive. There were just a lot of criteria to try to make the prom safe and something that the kids, the students would be able to attend. Unfortunately, with COVID, it's been a changing process. So it's a little bit tricky that way. But we ended up finding, as he said, Plymouth Plantation, which was the best option because it is outside, so.
Thank you, Ms. Benassi. And I'm in two groups of principals that we meet monthly. One group is the Cape and Islands Principal Group, and most of their schools are doing proms on school location. proms on school location, under an expensive tent that they have to rent, and it's actually costing them more just to rent the tent than it is for us to rent the venue. And they are not letting outside guests or underclassmen to their proms. And in the South Coast Conference, at last check, half the schools were having proms. And to Ms. Benassi's point, some proms are costing as much as a hundred and fifty dollars for students to attend, and we're, we're very proud of the fact that we've been able to keep the price within range that we've had, the sixty-five to seventy-five dollar range that we've had for the last twenty years. It's been consistent in that range. So we're excited to present this to you tonight. We're hoping that you will approve the, the change in venue. And, and as Adriana said, who I should mention, got into Harvard, by the way, so congratulations, Adriana. I didn't mention that when we introduced her. So certainly, we'll answer any questions you have. Like Adriana said, we hope you have some questions for us.
So first, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to Grace and Adriana for being here tonight. So well, about the prom. You know, Scott, like you said, not every school is having a prom, and with this on the agenda, I did do a little checking, and certainly Desi isn't encouraging schools to have proms, and when you are having proms, then, you know, having to do all of this extra work. So good for you guys for, for going through that in order to allow this class to have their senior prom.
We're very lucky that we're the size we are. That, that worked to our advantage once again, because the larger schools are, are obviously having trouble with this. So thank, thank you for recognizing their work.
Yes, definitely, definitely. So go ahead, April.
So I just have a question because I, I was into the meeting a little bit later, past the public participation. And when I came in, it did look like there were questions that had been being asked by parents regarding the prom. So I'm just wondering if those questions, because I didn't hear all of what people had said prior to me getting into the meeting, if those questions have been answered for those, those people that were looking for answers for the prom. I am excited that you guys are still trying to work out a way for the students to have a prom, and it is senior centric and focused, and I think that that's great. I know that it does probably bum a lot of kids out that they can't bring either a friend from another grade or a friend from another school to the prom. But I, I appreciate that we're still trying to have it when other schools are not. So I'm just curious if, if those people's questions from before I got on were answered in regards to the prom.
So those questions, April, were about the number of students that are being sat at one table. So as Scott explained, it's two students to a table. And there were students and parents who were on during public participation who were asking about having more people at a table. I guess specifically having six people at a table versus two. So Scott, could you, I know that you just went through it, but could you just tell us again? So you, tell us again why it's two and not six?
And, and I'd love to do six, and I'd love to have outside guests at this event. I mean, we love to do all those things. But the, you know, the issue is that we are following, you know, this is a school-sponsored event, so I am required to follow school rules, regulations and protocols and, and procedures as well. The procedure that we have in place when students are eating is they're six feet apart. I do not feel comfortable as a principal Wareham High School allowing six kids to be within a foot and a half of each other at a table and, and become a, a potential super spreader and ruin their graduation for one prom. We're excited to be able to offer this prom. We spent over a hundred hours researching this. And I get it, but you know what? The class of twenty twenty didn't have a prom, and we're lucky enough to be able to present this tonight and have a prom for twenty twenty-one. And we worked out a contract that we will only be paying for the students that want to go. So if there's only sixty students that want to go, we pay for sixty students. In past years, we've had to sell a hundred tickets for most venues, so we're very lucky with this venue that bent over backwards for us. And, and so that's what we have to follow. If for some reason things change between now and then, which I don't anticipate, obviously, we'd adjust accordingly, but we have a priority to make sure our students are safe. That's our number one priority above and beyond everything else.
So the date of the prom is May twenty-second. What is the last day that the seniors are in school?
So they'll be in, potentially, that they'll be in school a week, or six days later. They'll be in school through the next Friday.
Does anyone else have any questions, Mike or Mary? Mike, go ahead.
All right. So, so Scott, you just threw out a number of sixty. Is that, is that what you expect, or?
You know, it, it's usually, in my experience, about two-thirds of the senior class is usually what we get for kids attending. I mean, we're ready, let's put it this way, we have an agreement where if we sell a, a ticket to every student and the the teachers, chaperones have to sit on the outskirts, so the tent will do that. But, um, yeah, I think six, I would be very happy Mr. Flaherty with sixty students attending. That would be, to me, that would be an outstanding prom. If we have more, that's great. Less is fine as well.
And so obviously, that, you know, even, even I can do the math, that's, that's thirty tables, right? So I mean, and they can fit that.
Yes, they can fit that.
Yeah, okay.
They can fit, I believe they could fit that all under the tent.
Okay, well, all right. And, and so, and so you keep repeatedly bringing up the super spreader, you know, the notion of the super spreader. And I'm just reminded of what happened with Born, and I know it wasn't due to their prom. I don't think, I think it was a party or something that they had. Someone had a party. Yeah, I mean, th- those kids, those kids, they had no, they had no, no graduation. I mean, I mean, so, so many kids I knew from soccer, from youth soccer and, and such, you know, that, that, you know, my, my son had played, and they, they had moved to Born. And, and, and I know those kids, and they didn't have, they didn't have a prom. I mean, I mean, I mean, not a prom, they didn't have a graduation. You know, that, that was, yeah, we, we definitely, we definitely don't want that. It, it's, I understand that they, you're actually selling the tickets now.
We have to get started on it. The students understand that if it's not approved, there would be refunded. I think they've sold a handful of tickets.
Okay. Are, are you, are you still planning on any sort of a promenade in any sort of fashion?
Yes, we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. We wanted to make sure we went through the right process of getting this approved. We anticipate a, a promenade on Spelling Field using the bleachers and the field. And that's being worked, will be worked out starting tomorrow morning if this gets approved tonight.
Okay. And to the students who have been planning this, first off, great job. And, and I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be, it'll be a great thing. But did you, did you have any particular pushback from your fellow students regarding the number of seats at a table? We've heard, we've heard from, we've heard from parents. I just want to know if students are complaining as well.
Um, personally, the students aren't really complaining about the number per table, but they're more complaining about the no outside guests because a lot of students have dates from other schools or friends from other schools that they want to bring in.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to remind you, it's like forty-five minutes of the five-hour event, they're, they're seated at the table. Our, our kids will be out and about with masks on after that, so it's really a, a short period of time that they're going to be sitting down at a table.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, did you have your hand up?
I did. So now that students over sixteen can get back, stated that has no impact at all on decision for this. These tables, they can't be very
I think I can decipher. The, the question was, on the vaccine was the first question. And unfortunately, to be truly vaccinated for our students because of their age, they can only get the Pfizer vaccine. And because of that, it's a two-shot process, as you all know. And they're not fully vaccinated until two weeks after the last shot. So that puts us, for most students that had to wait until they released it for the sixteen-year-olds plus, I believe that puts the math into, best case scenario, early June, where they would be considered fully vaccinated two weeks post their second vaccination. If my math is correct, and I, I can't correct it. The tables, I think was the second question. And, and Adriana, I know you saw the tables with me. And I would describe them as six-foot tables that you might have for a backyard event that are kind of like those lifetime folding tables. Did you feel that they're the same way, Adriana?
Yeah, they were definitely big enough to seat, like, one student on one end and then another student on the other. So there's plenty of room.
So that, that's how they would make sure we contain six feet. And we'd also, again, be six feet away from the next table as well. So it's not just six feet from the guest, it's, it's six feet from the next table. So it's, it's quite a process. And we, we u- we utilize the math department quite a bit, Ms. Benassi did, to map this thing out. I hope that answers your questions, Mary.
So then, if they're six feet apart, they're, they're not wearing masks.
Only when they're eating, just like we do in the cafeteria. Only when the food comes out, the mask come off. But once the meals are done, in my experience with proms, they don't go anywhere near the tables, and they're matriculating throughout the area and, and enjoying the, the music and having fun.
Are they able to have a dance floor? Did you already talk about that?
They are able to have a dance floor, and I did not talk about that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have, Mike?
And so, yeah, you just reminded me about the dance floor. So when they're dancing, do they have masks on?
Yes.
So, I mean, is what it is. I mean, wow, that's a lot better than not having, not having a prom, uh, yeah. And I, I would, I would just ask Ms. Beckyaki if, if if the, if the people who spoke earlier, if they wanted to, you know, maybe, maybe if they had any more questions now that we have more information, if you want, might, might want to let them in.
Let me just see if they're still there. Bob, could you let Abby Wright in to the meeting? And Lisa Wright?
Um, I just wanted to say that I understand that not everyone's getting a prom, and I'm like really happy and appreciate that we are having one. And I just wanted to maybe suggest, like, to make it more safe. Like, maybe people could get tested before as well to, like, just make sure we're not spreading it as much.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Lisa, did you have another question that wasn't answered?
I was just curious. I, I thought that the venue was a done deal. I didn't even understand that. This was the actual vote. I thought it was a different situation. Uh, I thought it was with the restrictions. As it's inside, I believe the restrictions could be a little bit lessened. And my understanding was the last day of school was the twenty-first, and the prom is the twenty-second, so that would make them not even go back to school.
Junior finals of the following week after the prom.
As far as the venue, so the school committee, we approve the venue and we approve the date. We certainly have nothing, as you can see, to do with planning the prom. So the, the venue is, they've chose, we don't choose the venue. They, you know, the, the senior class in coordination with the principal and their advisors, they choose the venue. So we're just here to approve it. As Mr. Palladino pointed out, we approved their original venue. What was that, two years ago?
A year and a half ago.
A half ago, okay.
Just to be clear, we, we're changing it because that venue is not safe under these circumstances.
So does anyone else have any other questions? Because the next thing that we will do is, is go to a vote. And I would say that the school committee, as I said before, we're here to approve the venue, and we're here to approve the date. So that is what we will be voting on. We did hear from Mr. Palladino and the students and the Ms. Benassi about, you know, all the planning that's gone on. And I appreciate that the students and parents have come tonight to, to share their concerns. But we, the school committee, are not in a position to make any changes to those plans that have been made. Again, we're, we are here to approve the venue and the date, and I certainly appreciate all the work that's been done to find a venue. You say fifty venues. I mean, that's, that's overwhelming. I've done a little bit of wedding planning, and five seems overwhelming, so fifty is a lot. So, you know, good for you for really putting in a lot of work, and again, for making this happen because you know, didn't necessarily have to happen. So I'm really glad that you're able to, to do this for the kids. So unless anyone else has any other questions, we'll go ahead and vote on this change. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the change in venue and date? Change in venue.
So moved.
Roll call vote, April? Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four zero zero. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing how it goes.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the spring sports report in the high school.
Oh, fall two report. We'll get into the spring, though, don't worry.
Oh, I didn't know you were gonna talk.
If it's okay, we just wanted to give you a recap like we did last time at the fall two, before we talk about the spring. So the fall two season, as you may remember, took place after the winter season and before the spring season, which we'll talk about at the end. But it, it really went off without too many hitches. We had a few students who had to quarantine due to close contact with COVID-positive people outside of school. And one athlete tested positive due to contact outside of school. One team had to quarantine for a few days due to the exposure to that player, but no one tested positive after that. No games were lost due to COVID positive testing by a Wareham High School student. The football team had to cancel one game due to a COVID-positive student at another school. They couldn't play the game because of that. Wareham families were allowed to attend home games with two family, family members per student being allowed. Once again, I just want to give a shout out to WCTV. They did an unbelievable job, once again, of filming ninety percent of our games. Obviously, some of our games were going off simultaneously, so they couldn't be at every game, but they did a phenomenal job allowing for away parents to see the games, family members from all over North America to be able to see these games. And the, the great part is they archive the games as well, so you could, if you were working, say the game was at three thirty, you could go back and watch it. It was a, a really cool experience for all of our families. I'm very pleased, once again, to say that the protocols and procedures were followed by the students and coaches. As a result, I believe a successful season was had by all. I'm also happy to report, in overall GPA average for all of the fall two sports and students, the overall GPA was eighty-six point four, which is, which is impressive. Now, on to the spring season. The spring season will be starting shortly. It will start on May tenth. All teams will have between five and nine games, depending on the sport, and that could go up with some playoffs within the league. All of the season, all of the teams will wrap up on June fifteenth, when, and that's when the playoffs will take place. The same COVID procedures that we utilized for winter and fall two seasons will be used in the spring season. We would like to allow two parents per game for both home and away teams. So we've really kind of ta- tackled this progressively. We started off, as you remember, in the winter with no parents. We then went to the fall two season, allowing home parents only. And Mr. Roderick, thanks in advance for all that you did to, he took the brunt of the punishment from the away fans, so thank you for that. And, but we would like to allow, again, progressively moving forward, where we allow two home fans into the game and two away fans, and again, these will be family members. Uh, we will have one member of the athletic department at every home game to make sure protocols are being followed. And as you may remember, um, although it's been two years since we had spring sports. The spring sports we offer at Wareham High School are boys and girls track, boys and girls tennis, softball and baseball. And I just want to thank Ed Roderick, our AD. Who has done a masterful job at balancing all of this craziness. Being at every practicing game, making sure or having someone from the athletic department every practice a game, making sure the protocols are followed. As I mentioned, he he had to deal with some irate away fans, and I think he's got a friend at one school that likes to call him. And he's just done an awesome job at making sure we can continue with athletics. And and making sure, most importantly, our students are safe. And I'd also like to recognize his secretary, Sandy Babosa, who really does a great job behind the scenes, keeping the paperwork in order. So I I do want to bring in Ed Roderick, who is our AD. And I know he has a few things to say in regards to, uh, the the fall two season and also, uh, the spring season, which will be starting very shortly. And make sure you turn your mic on. And he loves this technology.
Oh, yeah. My all set now.
You're good, Ed. Thank you.
Not my strong point. No, I was very pleased with the with everything that's going on. We've had a lot of cooperation from everybody. I've had some nice help from, uh, from my workers too, Steve Faniel, Dave Brigholi. Uh, Jen LaFrancois, Janine, uh, people that have helped me out at the games. It takes takes a lot of work here, a lot of patience. And we've done it. And, uh, we're gonna do it now again in the spring. Uh, spring will be a little bit easier and difficult in some ways. It's easier than that. Everything is outside. It won't be as easy as far as, uh. There's areas to control. I mean, there's a big area with with where people can come and go as they want, so to speak. But you know what? I'm not, I don't anticipate, uh, big crowds and we should be able to handle it with no problem.
Great, thank you.
If you have any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Ed or Scott? Mike?
Um. Did I hear correctly that the, I think the the, um, girls soccer had a senior night?
A senior night? They all had senior nights.
Oh, good. All right. I just heard from.
Every every team had their senior night. I mean, as as close to normal as possible. And, um, yeah, we allowed that and we allowed and now, you know, we wanted them to make it somewhat normal as best we could.
Yeah, that that's great. I just I had I had heard good things about that and I wasn't there, so I didn't want to actually bring up it, bring it up as good news, but I did hear positive things about about. The senior night, of course, it's a great, it's really a rite of passage, you know?
And we had the field hockey team play under the lights on the football field, which went over very, very well. And we were. We're trying to make it as best we can for the student athletes within the situation that we're in.
That's great. I'm glad you brought that up, Ed, because we've never been able to do that before. And. I hope it becomes a tradition for that senior night for field hockey to be under the lights because they're really the only team that can't be under the lights because they're under the track. I see Joyce nodding because Emily's probably texting you in the background saying, why didn't we ever do that?
They rented lights and brought them in.
All right. I wasn't sure if that was Emily's class, but that didn't go over so well. One of them didn't work, if you remember correctly. But, um, I I'm I'm really excited we're able to do that because I always feel bad for field hockey. They they kind of missed that opportunity. So, Ed, I'm glad you brought that up. I was hoping you would.
I saw the field that day when it was painted for field hockey, too. It looked really nice.
Yeah, I wanted I wanted to add Bobby and the the grounds people, they have done a phenomenal, it feels so beautiful. They really do. And so hopefully that will continue.
Dr. Schwam?
I just wanted to ask about the boys soccer team because I've heard some really cool things about them. So I just thought maybe you could talk about that for a second.
Well, to be honest, we weren't even sure we were gonna have a team because of the number of kids we had, because some were playing, uh, some were doing to into a track. Some of the main players and, uh, they had a a great season for considering. Uh, there are a lot of times they had 11 players. And for those of you that don't know, 11 players play at once. So there were times we had no subs. And, uh, they won separately, won several games and they were in most of the games. And we lost in overtime, double overtime and then playoffs in a great game. Uh, kudos to the coach and the players. They played very hard. And, uh, you know, it's too bad it wasn't a regular season, regular sports, who had three or four extra players. They might have done very, very well.
So go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so this this year, we we waive the user fees, right?
Yes.
As well as transportation, right? Now, now, Dr. Schwam, is that this, are we planning on doing that next year as well?
I'm not sure what the decision on that is at this point. I think it will depend on how regular and natural we can be when we arrive.
I'm just.
Did you already vote that, Joyce?
Yes, we've already voted. The school committee has already voted to waive all athletic.
Oh, next year. Yes, for next year.
That's what I thought. I wasn't quite sure.
Transportation and athletic fees for next year. You, I think you voted it in March, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might have been the new year announcement.
So so I'm so I'm happy to hear that. And and, you know, usually I'm I'm all about, you know, I'm here to help kids get educated and, you know, sports is like extra, you know, but I'm. But I'm happy about that. And this is, this is like my last school committee meeting and I and I hope that actually continues, like well past all this because. That, I mean, kid, kids gotta be kids, you know? I mean, that's how we grew up. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but that's how we grew up. That's how I grew up. It's just you didn't even think about it. You played, you know? So.
Well, it is a good thing, no user fees right now. I mean, uh, the season right now, especially the seasons are shorter. Uh, and, uh, you know, it is a, it is a good thing. And hopefully. You're not gonna do it next year and it's makes things easier in many ways.
Yeah. But 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 both user fees and trans, there's no, transportation's included as well. Yeah, yeah, because that's part of it. Yeah, okay.
And I hope, uh, Mike, I hope that, uh, Ed can give us a report on, um, you know, X percentage more participating and we would probably attribute that to the user fees because it is. It does prohibit some kids from playing, you know, when you do have to pay that money. So I'm really hoping that we can. Hopefully make a case for that to stay in the future because I I do feel that. In sports that you would say are student secondary sports or tertiary sports. They are sometimes apt not to sign up because they don't have that, you know, that that money to pay the user fees, which then brings down our numbers of participants. So. I'm hoping that this levels the playing field for next year, assuming we're we're back under normal circumstances.
So I was able to peek in at a at a soccer game. Just I wanted to see what the stands looked like. I just wanted to see, you know. Um, and of course they were pretty empty because they're limited. So I'm just curious and I'm not second guessing because again, I understand that there's a lot of planning that goes into what you're doing. But have you given any thought to allowing more people into a game?
I think we'd like to. I know Ed wants to. Um, but I I just feel like we're we're taking the next logical step. Um, you know, based on my experience. You know, I and I think Ed is allowed for like, you know, siblings to come. I don't think he's counted those towards the two, especially for the senior event. I I I think we'd like to stay at two to just for the season. Just because, you know, we went from two. Home fans, now we're gonna do two home and two away. And like I said, Ed's been. He's been good about, you know, if someone has a younger sibling and they need to bring him because both parents are there, he's obviously allowed that to happen. I I just. I would love to, to answer your question. I'd love to. I know Ed would as well. Um, but we just want to make sure, you know, our our priority of the students and we want to make sure we're keeping everyone safe. So.
No, and I appreciate that. I just, you know, when you see the stands and of course those stands won't be the same stands for a spring sport, but you know, thinking about the baseball stands. Um, there'll be a lot of empty space where there could be. And then I had someone say to me, yeah, and if the boys soccer team wanted to go to the girls soccer team. Game, they couldn't go. We're all missing out on things throughout this. I get that. But if that's something that we could allow to happen, if we have this extra space. So now we're talking about baseball, softball, where there's in track, where there's lots of open space where. People could spread out.
Think I think the issue is, you you just said it where people could spread out. But the reality is, as you know, um, you know where people line up for the softball games and they all are kind of congregating together. So. I I I just would be concerned that we'd have a tough time policing that. Especially if we have a baseball game going off with a softball game because you know. The weather in the spring and we're still in the spring, even though we're starting a little bit later. I I think it would be tough, but it's certainly something that we will speak to the superintendent about and and really, um. Look at that. Maybe as as we get going and we feel more comfortable, maybe with her permission, uh, adjusting that.
I was just gonna say, you know, if the season starts and you see that, because we all know the games, they aren't super crowded. There's unfortunately, I wish they were. I wish every athletic game was, I wish, but. Um, you know, maybe, maybe as the season goes on. You know, as you see how it, because do you have someone working at every game?
Well, we will, yes, we will try to have everybody at every game. Um, and the spring sports. Over the years don't draw as well as the winter sports. So I'm not anticipating big crowds anyway. So. We'll have somebody there. We'll judge it and miss me and myself, Mr. Palladino, we'll we'll talk about it after a week or so, see how it goes.
Okay.
You know, like tennis, not many people will go to a tennis match, for example, um.
We have a pretty good girls tennis team, Ed.
Although, yeah, the tennis, girls tennis.
Tennis is legit. Contender.
They have a chance to do very well. No, I just think in general, it's, you know, it's a different type of season. And we'll see. I mean, I I'll, we'll we'll talk it over all the time after each week and we'll see how it goes. I mean, I. You know, I I don't anticipate any problems and we'll see, we'll see what the crowds are like.
Well, that's fair. That's good. Thank you. All right. Does anyone else have any more questions for Scott or Ed?
No questions necessarily, but I do want to thank them for everything that they've been doing to try to keep. As many sports going as possible for all these kids. I know it's been a challenge and. There are some districts across the state that didn't do any winter sports or any fall two sports. So. It is great that we have been able to sort of give these kids a little bit of normalcy after such a chaotic year. So thank you guys for all that you guys have been doing. To keep the kids safe and to try to keep things as normal as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right. Next up is the student advisory committee.
Great. So I I think we had Grace in. If we could get Grace back in. I believe Maya Brown and Autumn Francis are in the waiting room. And and while we're bringing them in, I just want to, uh, also, I want to bring those three in if they're, I think they're able to be there. And also just recognize Gisella Priestley, who we heard from, uh, the last time our student advisory council presented. And I want to thank all four of them. Um, they've been instrumental in so many things. Uh, most recently, they were, um. Kind enough to take a hard look at our. Our handbook and also our schedule, which we started a new schedule once again on Monday. I think this is our fifth schedule. And, uh, they've been very involved in looking at that and and just meeting every, we're back to meeting biweekly, which is great. Um, Grace actually was able to meet in my office, uh, and Maya and Autumn. Uh, were able, Autumn had an MCAS meeting. She had to go to that. That was top priority. But Maya was able to join us and Gisella was able to join us as well. So, um, they're here to kind of. Keep you in tune with what's going on at the high school, what's going on with the student advisory council. And also these kids have come up through the system, through all the schools. So I think they have a great perspective on the Wareham Public Schools and I know they love to answer questions. So. Uh, I guess we'll go in order, uh, by chronological order here, grade order. Uh, so Grace is the senior, uh, representing our student advisory council. So hopefully she doesn't steal everyone else's thunder. But Grace, I'm gonna turn it over to you, um, to just give your your report.
Okay, so basically the biggest thing that's changed is the new schedule. Um, we're going back full time. So it's like feeling how it was before COVID, which is exciting. Um, like Mr. Palladino mentioned earlier, I was actually able to meet in his office, which was like the first time I was actually able to meet in a meeting in person, which is pretty cool. So I was excited about that.
Six feet with masks, just if you're wondering. All right, Maya's the junior. And, uh, Maya is actually, Maya and Autumn are remote, so they bring a whole nother perspective to our meetings as well. Uh, being able to represent the remote students and obviously, as you know, Grace is is in the building. So Maya, you're up. If you can turn your mic on.
Hi, so along with what Grace said, um, a part of the, um, change of the schedule was they added on another lunch schedule. So instead of three lunches, there's four lunches. They added that to the third period block of the day to ma, and it makes the, um, period a little bit longer.
And I and I want to just recognize, um, Maya, Grace and Autumn. Uh, Maya mentioned the cafeteria. And, um, we were very fortunate that they were involved in actually creating a courtyard. This this group created a courtyard with the support of the superintendent, Dr. Shaverhood. To allow for students to eat outside. And we didn't anticipate. That it would ever be as needed as it is now, but it's a great opportunity for students to go outside and get some fresh air during lunch. And they actually. Created this whole area. They picked out the furniture and, uh, it's it's, we're very fortunate to have that as a school and, um. The students, other than today, have taken advantage of that, uh, throughout the, uh, the full return. Autumn, you are a sophomore and a member of the student advisory council. You're up. We're having trouble hearing you.
Better now?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to add on to the lunches. Um. For me, it's easier because we have advisory every day now. So that's more consistent. Like I remember to go to advisory because when we had it once a week, I had. A little trouble remembering to go, but now that's every day. It's a lot easier. And, um, for me personally, I first lunch, so that's, it's an easier transition just to go from advisory to lunch and not to any classes. So it doesn't like, um. Break up with the learning, but, um, that's just easier for me. And I do like the new schedule. It's a lot smoother and less complicated for me.
Thanks, Autumn. And we are excited to have advisory back. This is, uh. An advisory in it. We hope that it works this way for everyone. Sometimes with transitions with with new teachers, it does fluctuate, but the idea is. Starting in eighth grade, the students are with that advisory teacher for all five years. So that becomes their go to person when they have questions, concerns. And it's also, I mentioned Autumn couldn't be at our meeting this week. Because she was at an MCAS meeting because MCAS start next week for us. And she, uh, obviously had to go to that. That was top priority, but it also allows us to have time to meet with students. Obviously. Right now we're meeting remotely, but it gives us time to meet without impacting instructional time. So it's a great. Feature to our schedule and we're glad we were able to put it back in. So they love questions. I hope you have all kinds of questions for these three, uh, phenomenal students.
Does anyone have any questions? No, no questions for them. Mr. Palladino, is this the last time that we will see Grace?
I believe it is. I believe it is unfortunately, but she is the youngest sister. We're gonna recruit her. She just doesn't know it.
Well, Grace, good luck. It's been really great having you here as part of the student advisory group. I think I remember the first night that you came. You're a little more shy than you are tonight, which is great. Um, so when we came to the school to visit, Mr. Palladino, we got to see the outside. Um, area at the cafeteria, which I had never seen before. I'd seen the the tables outside the library. It's really nice. So do you guys go out there and eat? Well, Maya and Autumn, you're not in school, right? Grace, do you go out there to eat lunch at all?
Yeah, when it's nice out, I'll definitely be out there more to eat lunch. Um, but like today was rainy, so we had to like fit everybody in in like the cafeteria, which is kind of difficult, but like there's other rooms too, like the. Student store is open, has like tables in there for students to sit in too. So it works.
And are those areas of the school that were open before? Do they just reopen very recently, like the school store?
Um.
So the school, the basically what happens is. We only need the school store and there's a classroom in the back of the cafeteria that we only need when it's raining out because we average about 20 to 25 students outside eating. Per lunch, but when we have inclement weather, we need to have space for those kids to eat. It's really kind of just overflow. Uh, I think we averaged about seven or eight extra seats per lunch today. Um, and obviously that's predominantly because of the rain. Usually we're averaging about 20 empty seats. And when I say empty seats, you know, everyone's spread out six feet apart. So it's not like a traditional cafeteria that you'd have. You know, we can can in pre-COVID or post-COVID, we can fit 300 kids in the in the cafeteria. Um, but obviously now it's substantially less than that. So we do have the two overflow areas that we use. Today was the first day we've had to use it because today, believe it or not, was the first day of inclement weather we've had in quite some time.
Um, and Autumn and Maya, so have you picked your classes for next year? Is that something you've already done?
Well, can can they tell us maybe some of the advanced classes they're taking to do a little bragging? You're gonna have to turn your mics on. Well, can can they tell us maybe some of the advanced classes they're taking to do a little bragging, gonna have to turn your mics on.
Um I signed up for the dual enrollment program at Bridgewater State for next year.
Oh, nice, so what classes will you take there?
Um in English class, I signed up for an in a biology class.
And so the students who are at Bridgewater this year, are they in person at Bridgewater or are they remote?
They're still remote, still remote, but they'll be, we have notification, they'll be in person in the fall.
Mm-hmm, great, and Autumn, how about you? No, we still can't hear you, Autumn.
We'll we'll have Autumn type it in the chat, but her her uh classes are very impressive as well.
All right, well, we will look forward to hearing more from you next year, too. All right, if anyone doesn't have any other questions for the girls, we'll just say thank you, thank you very much for for coming tonight.
Autumn said the IB, she's in the IB program, so she's taking IB classes.
Wow. Oh, so it'll be your first year taking IB classes next year as a junior, oh good, well, I look forward to hearing about that. Mike, go ahead.
It's good, he kinda reminded me of something, uh you're gonna have the the kids that are in college now come and like speak to the kids that are in in school right now?
So so they did a uh virtual uh meeting this year, but it was funny, I had a a lunch with the top five students in the senior class. And I said, we'll be back here again in about, you know, nine months and I want, I told him, I said, I want all you back to talk to the kids live. Uh we usually do that in January traditionally, and we will absolutely be doing that, that's one of the highlights of of the year is to hear the kids coming back and. Giving advice, so I think it's pretty powerful and I hope we can get Josh in there as well.
Yes, that's why I was, I I don't remember hearing anything about it, so, yeah, that would be great, yeah.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Right, next on the agenda is obsolete furniture.
So they were provided with two lists, one from the multi-service center and one from the high school with various items. That are either broken or uh no longer in use, so we would love to have a vote to recommend them for obsolete.
Okay, does anyone have any question?
Uh I'm sorry, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, if there are no questions, we'll call for a vote, uh Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so four zero zero. Next on the agenda is the re um school choice district vote.
Yeah, so every year, the school committee uh has to decide whether or not we accept school choice students K through twelve into our system. And so we're asking for you to consider that and vote on whether or not you would like to have them.
Okay.
In Wareham.
And so just to be clear, we're voting to accept students, this has nothing to do with students going out.
Just to have them coming in.
Okay, to the, Mike, go ahead.
So uh is this K through twelve or K doesn't, K's not included in this, right?
Pre-K is not.
Pre-K, okay, so this is K through twelve, does not include, you know, pass or does it?
Pass already accepts any, most anyone who comes, and they can be choice kids if they're from.
Okay.
Other places, so we have. Excuse me?
This this no tuition?
It depends, if they're choice, then no.
We get about um five thousand dollars a kid for any any child that choices into the district, so. Um this year, it's just over three hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we receive. And it fluctuates depending on, you know, kids leave and people, kids come.
Okay.
But the last time we looked at that number, the number coming in was going up and the numbers.
That is correct, absolutely, yep.
And it's also true with the Catholic schools, the private schools, uh that I have to allot money for in Title One. For our Wareham students, um and uh that number is decreased significantly. Um so it's kind of amazing to see that.
All right, if no one else has any questions, ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
The school choice district.
Second.
Okay, a roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so four zero zero. Thank you. Uh next on the agenda is the report of the business manager, Christine Suko.
Yes, in your packet, you received um the year-to-date budget report for March. Um we continue to look at it, reviewing this daily, if if not more than that, as we move to the end of the year. I know that um you know, one of the areas that I'm closely watching is the uh school committee contracted services, which is your legal. Um you know, this, the percent available is about six percent, so I anticipated the next school. I I don't believe I have one on for this meeting, but for the next meeting, I'll have a transfer in there, once we have a better idea of the negotiation bills that are still. Um yet the attorney fees for negotiations have yet to come. Um that's really, really the only um area that I have some concern with at the moment, so. The next, over the next few weeks, this is when the nitty-gritty comes down to looking, looking extremely closely to this as we continue to. Look at it to close out this this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if anyone. Any questions? On the March report? Okay, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Report.
So I'm up again now with the transfers. That was also in your packet, um. There's absolutely no change to the bottom line of the LEA budget, if you're, on uh March twenty-fifth, you voted to. Bring back units A and B to the full one percent and a step, so this is reflective in these transfers.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any questions about the transfers? It appeared by looking at them that um the transfers are all still within the same major accounts.
Yes, they are, I, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and as we get closer to the end of the year, that might not be the case, but for right now, that's what's happening.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, if there aren't any questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Uh roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Christine, while you're here, could I just ask you a question that came to mind when we were just talking about transportation?
Yes.
Um in the past, when we voted for transportation fees. One of the reasons we did it was because it was hard to know who was gonna be riding the bus.
Correct.
Plan for transportation, so even though you're not collecting fees, are you still collecting that information from?
Yes, yep, they will be, they'll be um, just like we had a form of the, for the kids that came this year that were. Um hybrid, they filled out a form and requested a seat on the bus, that will continue to happen in the fall, as it did when we just moved to. Um full-time, if the if the kids went from hybrid to full-time or remote to full-time in the buildings, they had to request a seat on the bus.
Okay, and did you have good response from families?
I believe that we did, yes, and it I it was, um I still believe that there's still some seats because we still have. Um kids that are just completely remote, or they drive themselves or get driven, so the the same, the uh same process will happen. Before school starts up again in the fall.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent, in this case, the assistant superintendent.
Yes, um so um I would ask for your approval of the bill and payroll warrants. Payroll week ending April third, twenty twenty-one, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Payroll week ending April tenth to a thousand twenty-one for nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one cents. Bill warrant for eight twenty twenty-one, one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Bill warrant for fifteen twenty twenty-one, a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six and forty-nine cents. And bill warrant for twenty-two twenty twenty-one, a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Is there more to improve?
Uh second.
Okay, uh roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Dr. Schwam, do you wanna just give us an update on the um the return, I know you already talked a little bit about it.
Yes, um just because it's such a wonderful, it's so great to have everyone back, but um so far, so good, um the. I'm so obviously impressed with the work that has been done by the leadership teams within each of the schools, the changing of. I know it sounds a little bit, when you're not in it and you don't really understand it, the change of schedules has been immense all year long. It's a big deal because it's how people move and operate day in and day out, and it really um it pulls on. People and the culture of the building, um when there's an un, when it's unpredictable, right, and you don't know what's happening next, so I have to say that um just. Completely impressed with how much effort people have put in to try to make it as seamless and um. Uh just a great place to learn as possible under the circumstances over and over again, not just once, but as Bethany Chandler has said many times, I feel like I've had. Five first days of school, right, because that's how it feels every time there's a change, so um it's just very impressive. Um and kudos to the leadership teams and the teachers and students and everyone who's just stepping up to the plate. Our students are just incredibly resilient and uh we often don't give them enough credit for what it is they are capable of and how they do adjust. They're incredibly malleable and they have the potential to just carry on, oftentimes, we worry a lot more about that. As in our adult lens head than what happens if you watch them day to day, they get pretty used to doing what they need to do. And um our kids have risen to the occasion over and over again, many times this year, so it's great to have everyone back, um. We're working on making sure transportation is smooth, there are a couple of little glitches, we're getting that squared away. Um and overall, um just looking forward to a successful last few months. And then transitioning to the summer so that we can get back to normal so much, so as possible in August. When we come back for real, so it will be just refreshing to be back.
What is the last day of school?
Hmm, I think.
I think it's June sixteenth, it's a half a day.
I believe it's the sixteenth, so um but I never know because I don't have one, so. I'll have, I have to put it on my calendar and I have to look, because I, it doesn't really faze me, I mean, my secretary has to remind me that it's a holiday. That I'm not supposed to come to work, so it's just one of those things about.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I put you on the spot like that.
No, that's okay, but I believe it's around the June fifteenth, sixteenth day, um but I will definitely check for you.
You know, here we are talking about their return to school and then next thing you know, we're gonna be talking about the last day of school, it's crazy.
No, I think Jamie just told me when it is, it's the sixteenth half day.
Mike. And so let's say it is that, then is that the earliest ever?
No, I think that's pretty, I mean, without snow days, depending, like I know my first year here. We we went to June thirtieth, because that was that horrible, horrible winter.
Yeah.
Um but depending upon how many days we have under the circumstances, we usually get out around the, around this week or maybe into the next week. But it's right around the right time overall.
Yeah, and and don't feel bad, Dr. Schwam, I wasn't gonna say this, but I showed up last Thursday to the school committee meeting, that that wasn't happening. And I called Joyce, I said, I said, I'm early, I'm early this time and I don't see anything, what's going on, and I messed her up because like, there's no meeting, is there?
Yeah, sort of what happens, yes.
Made me panic for five seconds, yeah.
Um so then you talked about the summer, Dr. Schwam, too, and I and I'm really looking forward, I know that there's been a lot of work going on, planning on summer programs for our students. So I'm really looking forward to hearing more about those.
Actually, we did a segment today on the, on uh WCTV.
Oh.
Yeah, but Kim has a weekly show, and so I did the show the last couple of times. Um in her, just in her place, but usually it's her and she has somebody come on every week, and so Bob White. Does them for us, so he records them, so this, yesterday was, no, today, sorry, this morning, was about summer school. So Jane and I both were on and we spoke at length about summer school, registration information was posted on social media for people to sign up. We have a limited number because we have to keep the safety protocols and make sure that everybody's distant and all of that, so. When we would normally have three hundred plus kids, we could have two hundred possibly, but we've also spread them out, so we're having summer school. At Decces too and Minnet Middle High School, so we have three different areas. Um we've worked together, we've worked collaboratively, we've in um enhanced the boost programs, because we wanna make sure that our kids. Have whatever it is that they've missed and are prepared for the next grade level, um and we have some wonderful teachers that have signed up to do that. We've got paraprofessional support in each of those programs and uh it starts. Uh July sixth and it ends August twelfth, so it's um pretty significant, it's Monday through Thursday. Eight-thirty to two-thirty, transportation is included, so there's no cost to transportation, so people, but but the most important thing is to get those registrations filled out. If you're really interested, because we will have a cutoff and it won't be as flexible as we've always been able to be as a result of the restrictions.
And eight-thirty to two-thirty, that's a longer day than school, summer school has, summer.
I think, no, I think we've always done that somewhat, I believe, um but I also.
Yeah, that's been done for a while with the care program.
Yeah, right, because of the twenty-fourth century.
The extended year special ed program, that's shorter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so and we're holding the, obviously, the special ed program and that will be at Minnet section of the middle school. So we have that ready to go as well, um what we won't be able to do is extend anybody's time, so if they're there for. Um a program and that ends sooner, we can't, we can't flex the kids over in because of the, because of the safety protocols. So, you know, we're just in an interesting spot, we wanna offer everything as much as possible, but we also have to follow the rules and keep our kids safe, so. Uh we're doing the best we can, but I think it's going to be really exciting, Buzzard Bay Coalition is partnering with us. Um there are some other partners, Jane can speak much more eloquently about all of this, because she is direct contact with that. But um there's some great experiences available for our kids.
Good, well, we'll be sure to invite Jane to a meeting and tell us all about it, all right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the report of the school committee. So I did reach out to Mark Adrian on earlier today and he sent over an update, which is what I shared with you. Um with the other school committee members earlier today, and I do believe that Bob has it and can share it. We can put up um some of the pictures anyway, are you able to do that?
Thanks, Steve, well.
Oh, Steve, sorry. Well, so Dr. Schwam, feel free to jump in here at any point, too, because.
Okay.
Um so Mark, he just shared some of the um, some of the features of the building, he shared some of the construction update. Um that, you know, painting is going on throughout, flooring is going on throughout, we had seen some pictures of the terrazzo floor being put down. At an earlier presentation, um which is really cool to see, um some of the outside work is going on, playgrounds are being finished. Retaining walls, um I, all the windows are in now. They uh continue to install ceramic tile, continue to do paving. Um continue to paint, that's a lot of, that's a lot of building to paint. Um so then if we go down to the pictures, Steve, can we go down to some of the pictures that Mark sent over, so there's a picture of the front of the building. Um. And this next picture, I believe, is towards the right of the building, towards the third and fourth grade wing. Uh the next picture is a classroom with that uh the storage being installed, some of the colors you can see, or the colors are different in each wing. Depending on the, on the grade level, the ceilings, the last time I saw a picture, there were no ceilings, so those are going in. Um things are just happening so fast, that storage along the windows. Um that tile work, Dr. Schwam, I believe that's in the innovation hub, is that true?
I'm not sure if I've seen that in. I'm not sure if I've seen that in the innovation hub, might be a wall in there?
Yeah, yeah, I know there were a few different spots where, where there was some tile work. Being done.
Yeah.
There's a seating area there. There's the terrazzo floor, again, color based on the, the area of the building that they're in.
Yeah, that's the younger, the blue is younger. Okay.
This is the cafeteria, and this, what's new, I noticed in this picture is the acoustic panels, those weren't there the last time I saw a picture. And there's that green ceiling. Yeah, I know the building committee was very happy about that green ceiling, not only in the cafeteria, but also in the next picture in the gymnasium. It just really, the color just really pops. Then the next picture is, I believe, the back of the building. Unfortunately, what you can't see in this picture is the cafeteria windows, caf- cafeteria windows that are in the back, they're just, the windows are so beautiful. And then the next picture, I believe, is towards the left of the building. That would be like maybe the preschool entrance right there.
Yeah, pre, it's the back part of the pre-KK, and then that's, looks like the playground area.
Yep.
Out the back.
So I really appreciate Mark sending over that update and those pictures, it's really exciting to see. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Mike? I can't promise it.
I know we had a long discussion about this as a, as a building, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I know we had a long discussion about this at the building committee, but I, but I forget what was ultimately decided. Are we doing the sod or the, like the spray grass?
I do not know the answer to that question.
You mean for on the playground surfaces?
No, for like, for like, the finished, like, the finished product, like I have to do the whole thing, we want to, there was some discussion on whether or not we're going to put sod. Or we're going to plant the seed, because it would be like, you know, it just looked nice during the opening with sod, but it was cheaper to go with the, the seed. But I don't remember what we did.
I don't either.
I know, right, it was a while ago.
That was a long time ago, I don't remember, we should, we'll check on that.
I was going to say, why don't you ask that at the next building committee meeting?
And, and how about, we had some discussion also about putting out some graphics in the, in the cafeteria and up, up, up high on the walls and stuff. Has anything been decided on that?
Not yet.
Yeah. I just know, I, I remember when it's when I, when we had that discussion, and I know like Claire Smith has a lot of really, really good, like, pictures of Wareham from, from Grumpy. You know, from, from all the nature pictures that he's taken, you know, throughout the years. Yeah, that'd, that'd be, that'd be awesome.
That might be good. Yeah, we, we've been really concerned of the floors and the design in the permanent structures, you know, like that, so there's been a lot of discussion around that. So with the map on the floor and the compass and the things, the entrance of the innovation hub and, you know, the. That permanent structure of the flooring is a big deal, right, because that floor is going to last longer than any of us. Is, and anybody really, so we want to make sure that that was right. But I'm not sure about that wall, because we've had a lot of discussion about the opening of where the stairs are. Big wall that leads you up to the innovation hub, so I don't know what the plan is there.
Okay, well, again, thank you to Mark for providing that update, and we'll look forward to you getting the answer to that, Mike, and bring, oh, you won't be able to bring it back to us at the next meeting. Which leads us into the next thing, it's not on our agenda, but this would be the best time, I think, during our meeting, to just say thank you to Mike. Tonight's his last meeting as a school committee member, next week is the election, so we just want to say thank you. For the hours of work that you've put in and, and you'll be missed on the committee. Of course.
Thank you.
Is there a knock at the door?
There is a knock at my door. Really? This is awesome, thanks, guys.
The best you can do during a remote meeting, so we presented. Years of service. Thank you to Jamie for that plaque.
Oh, great, thank you very much.
Would anyone like to say anything?
I would.
Just wanted, I know, I miss you guys, you know, I said, when I, when I, when I announced I wasn't running, I said, what I wanted to say, you know, and, and, and. I'm gonna say, you know, but, but three years is a long time. Thank you, I was not expecting that, so. And, and I'll still see you on the building committee, and we still have an executive session that I think I may have to go to. But, but yeah, no, no, thank you for everything, and, and I wish everybody success, I wish Wareham success, and you know, I'm still. Still going to be involved somehow, I'm sure, you know?
Oh, I'm sure you will, yes. April, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Mike for all of his hard work and his, his, his attendance and everything. He shows up to all the sporting events, he's shown up to every meeting and every committee that I've, you know, been a part of with him and the. And just for his, his leadership and his, when he was chair. And his just ability to really kind of take things and, and ask a lot of questions and make informed decisions. And I've learned a lot from being on the committee with you, and, you know, the election being Tuesday, you know, my seat is up for reelection, so it's entirely possible. I won't be here either, depending on how things go, I really hope to be and hope to continue to serve, but I just. Thank you, Mike, for everything that you've taught me in being a part of this committee, and I hope that, that, you know, your. Committee retirement serves you well, and you are able to spend more time with your family, and I know you had recently been promoted at your job, so congratulations for that as well. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, very much. Now, see now, I feel bad because I feel like I should be saying something nice about you, because he might not be either.
We don't know yet, we can wait for that. I'm going to cross my fingers that I'll still be here, so.
Mary, go ahead.
No, I mean, April probably has said most of it, but, so I'll just say a big, huge. Thank you, Mike, you've been a great asset to the committee, and I appreciate you being. You know, that you listen to all sides, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, that's like the best compliment people could ever give me, I just, I want to be in the middle of this somewhere, you know, just.
Okay, and next, does anyone have any other business that was not anticipated?
I just wanted to remind people too, that we do have an election coming up on May fourth for several town offices, aside from the committee. And I hope that people are doing their research about all of the candidates, I think all of the candidates have done a wonderful job of, of answering questions. Both on WCTV's candidate's night, and that if people haven't been able to see that, that they do go and review that. And make informed and heartfelt decisions on how they feel the committee will work best going forward. I know that there were some candidate profiles done in Wareham Week as well, so I really hope that everybody in town. Gets out and votes and makes their voices heard, so that we can continue to have a, a well-rounded and kid-centric committee. That is focused a hundred percent on the kids in this town who deserve the absolute best we have to offer.
Okay, thank you, April. On that note about the election, I did want to just mention that town meeting is still scheduled for Saturday, May eighth, at eleven AM at the, at Spillane Field. So hopefully that will stay the same, it hopefully won't rain that day, I know they have a rain date scheduled, but let's just hope that they get to have it on Saturday, May eighth. And also that our next meeting is next Thursday, May sixth, usually we're every other week, but. Somehow in this rotation, it, it came up, so it's next Thursday, May sixth at seven PM. Okay, and with that, Mike, do you have a question?
Yeah, so. Other business, just, I've been seeing in the news, and I think, you know, discussing with you a little bit. The, the, looks like the closing of the Boys and Girls Club, do we have any sort of? Can we, can we as a school district help, you know, those displaced kids with anything, that, that's kind of a question to Dr. Schwam. But has, has anyone given that any thought?
Uh, yeah, they're actually discussing different scenarios that could possibly be. Helpful, it's a separate, obviously a separate organization, and I think that there's this assumption that when we apply for grants. It's like we have the money available, so to speak, and why can't we just take that money and give it or do that or do this, but unfortunately or fortunately, however you want to look at it. When we apply for grants, it's for a very specific purpose, and the grant always has a reason why they're offering that money. And whatever it is that you're doing, you have to adhere to those, those stipulations within the grant, so that being said. You know, the twenty-first century beyond school time and so forth, Jane has been involved in conversations quite a few. And unfortunately, because they're such a separate organization, they're not really connected to the school, and our grants are separate. It becomes kind of difficult and challenging, so I think, Kim, I know Dr. Shaverhood, I know Jane. I know a few committee members and some other people are getting together to Zoom and try to figure something out. As much as possible, but I just don't know how much we, you know, how much we could, if we can, how that would work and so forth. So it's not, like, we're not, we're, we're definitely involved in the discussion.
There is, that meeting, I believe, is happening tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, and there are a lot of parties that are coming together. I know if you watched the selectmen's meeting the other night, Jared was on there, he's very much involved, Jared Chadwick, and they're just YMCA. I think everyone is trying to, instead of all these different people trying to do what they can to help, I think what they're doing tomorrow is coming together. To try to work together to, to work out a solution. For those families.
Yeah.
Mary, did you have a question?
No, because it would go beyond, so, I mean, it's something that would have to be within like that committee to, to ask.
About the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. All I want to say also about our meeting next week, it was on our school committee meeting schedule, it is noted as the recognition meeting. You know, every year we recognize milestones and retirements, and because we can't do it in person, it, it won't happen. So we, we didn't do it last year because we didn't want to do it remotely, and we're going to put it off this year until we can do it one hundred percent in person, without any restrictions, hopefully. So hopefully that will happen at the very beginning of the next, of next school year. So it might say next week's meeting is at six-thirty, but it's going to be scheduled for seven, just like a regular meeting. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll just ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah, yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero.
Everyone.
Good night.
Bye, Mike.